Welcome, everyone, to the September 25th City Council Work Session. And we have two items today, and the first one is the Downtown Public Safety Strategy. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and before I turn it over to Pete and Cheryl and others to talk more about the strategy itself, I just wanted to say a heartfelt thank you to Beverly Hughes. You might remember as we went into this that the council asked me to appoint a representative Community Committee to help us work through this conversation with respect to downtown, and she graciously volunteered to chair that and did a really excellent job. So I just want to say thanks to her as well as the rest of the committee. And with that, I'll turn it over to Pete.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Councilors. Before we begin, I'd like to introduce Cheryl Stone. She's been the Court Administrator in Eugene Municipal Court since January, and she'll share a little bit about her background before we begin.
Well, I'm Cheryl Stone, and I started with the Eugene Municipal Court in the middle of January. Before that, I worked for the Salem Municipal Court as the Court Administrator, and prior to that, for the State Court Administrator's Office and Trial Court Administrator in Benton County. I have a bachelor's in Business Administration, and I'm a graduate of the Institute of Court Management Fellows Program, which is the highest level certification for a Court Administrator through that organization.
And we've learned pretty quickly that Cheryl's been a great hire for the city. She's contributed significantly, and you'll learn a little bit about that here in a minute. I'm sure you all remember that last year, the council modified the ordinance, the Downtown Public Safety Zone Ordinance, and directed the City Manager to establish a committee that developed a number of recommendations. Cheryl and I sat and attended most of their meetings and listened to the philosophy that informed the suggestions that they had and their recommendations. A city group of staff members, including Cheryl and I, went through the recommendations, consolidated some, as you've read in item number two there, and moved forward with others. And what we're about ready to introduce is initiatives that the city is moving forward with, unless we hear something else from you, and that we plan to work on implementing here in the next little bit. To begin with, we're not recommending that we extend the Downtown Public Safety Zone, extend the sunset. The changes that were put in place, between the changes that were put in place and reductions to the District Attorney's Office, there's just very few exclusions that are occurring. And I think that the initiatives that we have here will make a little bit of a difference. To begin with, you've probably heard quite a bit about the increased positive activity downtown. I believe we can talk a little bit more about that if you like, but it's detailed explicitly here. The recommendation to study changes to the Municipal Court is a program that Cheryl will talk about in a little bit. There has been, for some time, the question as to whether or not there are enough public restrooms in the downtown core, and we will move forward with a triple bottom line analysis that will help us to understand the need for bathrooms, restrooms. And then, because of the reductions to the ability, to capacity in the District Attorney's Office, they're prosecuting about 26 percent fewer felony cases, and those include drug possession and drug delivery. We've taken some drug delivery cases to the DA's office that have occurred downtown, and they haven't been able to prosecute them. So there's not enough accountability in that area to change some of the behavior that we're seeing. So we'll may come back to the council with the suggestion, the recommendation, that we add charges that would otherwise be in the state court, and so that prosecutors have those as an option. The court, the prosecutor's office, the defense contract doesn't have enough capacity to increase their workload, but creating options could help us hold certain offenders more accountable than they are today. But I think we'll begin with the overview of the program and the court.
Sure. I was asked to describe what Community Court is. That's the program that the court is investigating at this time. A Community Court model is one that is a problem-solving approach for quality-of-life crimes in communities. So each community is different because the problems in each community are unique to that culture and to that city. There are community courts all over the world, but also Portland has a couple of community court models that they do in different communities of the Portland area. It uses evidence-based practices so that you can help improve outcomes on the other side, includes alternative sentencing options, which is one of the recommendations from the committee. And the alternative sentencings are things like connecting people with services as part of their sanction, and whether, depending on what their needs are. If it's homeless, if it's substance abuse, if it's mental health, then you would connect them to those types of services. It also is very wide, so we would need to define it. It could be defined geographically, so it could be defined to the downtown area. It could be defined by the type of crime that's committed. It could be defined by the type of quality-of-life issue that individual is experiencing. It could be defined as broad or as narrow as the city would like to define it. It could be defined in terms of the frequent users of our system even. And it's designed to address community-specific problems, reduce crime, strengthen neighborhoods, support victims, and improve public trust and justice. It reduces the timeline to resolve a case where it might take, you know, two to three months to resolve a case now. The idea with Community Court is you count those in a matter of days or weeks, so you're connecting people with services much sooner. Even for mental health court, you connect them much sooner with the treatment that they need than you would under a traditional model. Judge Allen is very excited about this idea and this approach to processing these types of cases. The Center for Court Innovation contacted us, and I wrote a research paper as part of my Fellows Program. They ran across my research paper and some research they did, and contacted and offered free technical assistance to us that federally funded by a grant. So they are offering all of their services and their database and their experience with New York and Manhattan and other places across the United States to help us with the Community Court model here in Eugene. The roadmap for moving forward is, first, it requires a needs assessment. That's a three-to-four-month project. We're using U of O interns to help with that, to supplement the staffing that's needed to perform that. And then we would sit down with a group of people and design our concept of what a Community Court would be, define what resources or reallocation of resources that would be needed to be able to make that happen. And we can provide progress reports to you as that project moves forward.
And I think, to avoid repeating any details that are already in the timeline for the city, the I got coverage pretty much everything that we have for you.
Okay, thank you very much for the work on this, and I think we all thank Beverly Hughes and the whole committee for their work. This is really well done, I think. I just wanted to say, in terms of activities downtown, I have noticed a real improvement with the increased tables and umbrellas downtown during the part of the day that the food carts are down there. It really seems to have displaced, at least for that period of time, activity that was is less desirable in that location. So that's a good thing, I think. And I just wanted to put out that I hope that as we plan Summer in the City activities, that we think of asking others, so we don't have to do quite as much of the work ourselves, that we can add something to it, not at the cost of more staff time. I was good, I'm thrilled by this Community Court proposal. It is definitely in the direction that I love to see us headed. I think it's going to be pragmatically help us out, and I just hope you'll bear in mind that we have a lobby group that we work with in Washington, D.C., with our United Front efforts, and they're always looking for things that they can help us with at the local level in terms of finding grants and other kinds of opportunities. So I think you should think about that connection. They ask us all the time, isn't there something more that we can be doing to help you at home? So this may be one of those things that we can grow. I did want to say that I think, I'm really appreciative we're going to deal with the bathroom issue. I am looking at the cost, and I don't know what we'll learn from our, the bathroom that we put in the skate park, new skate park area, but it's single, I think, and it's kind of like the loo concept, and I that's, I don't know how much that costs, but I'm just, I think it makes sense to me to think more about the single user as opposed to multiple users, and it makes sense for us to try to see what kind of difference it would make in terms of public safety and other kinds of issues if they were the kind that I understand that to be, which is exposed heads and exposed feet and single usage and washing and all that on the outside. So I just hope we'll have that as part of this conversation, because the costs don't seem to me to be, I mean, the costs, all costs are somewhat large, and so let's be sure we're getting something that we think will move us forward. And look forward to the, hearing more about these new offenses and curious about what we legally can do and can't do in terms of moving those into the Municipal Court system. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. With the success that we have seen growing in our downtown core, I, of course, think it is the exact wrong time for us to sunset this ordinance, but council has already answered that question, so we're past that. My recollection of the motion passed by council was to, and the directive was that this committee would come up with ways for us to transition and deal with the reasoning behind the establishment of the ordinance in the first place and find other ways to address that. Now, I appreciate very much a lot of hard work by a lot of volunteers and by staff on coming up with this, but for me, having read through the materials, there's a pretty sizable disconnect, for me, between the reason for enacting the ordinance in the first place and from my limited understanding what some of these suggestions will address. We had a, what I would call unhelpful at times, debate about why we started this, but I can tell you, because I remember in 2007 when my office was downtown, and I talked with the one police officer who was down there, asked that particular officer, what do they need to make it safer downtown, because I'm having neighbors come to me and say, I'm being threatened, I have people, you know, breaking my windows, riding on it, threatening me at my door, coming in my store and threatening me. What can we do? And whenever they get arrested for that behavior, because of the nature of the jail, they're out within an hour, and they're right back here threatening me worse. So what do we do? I brought up this after speaking with the officer and saying, what are some of the things we can do because the jail doesn't work adequately? She showed me a form that they can use to exclude people from the park blocks, because we own that property, and said, boy, if I had one of these for the general downtown area instead of just the property we own for people who are really off, you know, of real problem, and we could exclude them, that would really help. And that's why I brought that forward in the first place. This is a good set of things we can do to make downtown better, but it doesn't, for me, address, how do we deal with the problem repeat person who's threatening in a manner behaving in antisocial ways? And we still, today, don't have the jail space at the county to hold someone like that in a significant and ineffective way. Can you tell me specifically, how is some of this designed to address that guy who's going to be out in an hour, and he's going to be knocking on the door again, saying, I'm going to get you for what you did?
Yeah, you know, the lessons that we've, that government across the United States has taken in the last four or five years with the economic downturn are those, it's forced us to ask what works, not what have we always done that seems to work. And when we focus our attention on reducing crime, we know that that, in reality, that means reducing recidivism. And we don't, nobody has more jail beds now. So governments are finding different ways to reduce recidivism, effectively reducing crime. And what studies have shown, and Cheryl can go into this at greater length, is that how we work with each defendant who has a unique set of personality conditions that contribute to their behavior, that puts them in court, puts them in jail, how we deal with that matters greatly in whether or not they commit another crime.
That's right. I would just add to what Chief Kern said about, with a Community Court, that is really the purpose of those courts, to shorten, because we don't have jail beds, because we need solutions, because we need to connect people sooner than what a normal judicial process would allow for. The Community Court connects with that timeframe and provides the flexibility and sentencing alternatives to hold people accountable, where in today's environment, they may not have that same accountability without the jail bed. So there would be certainly some sort of escalated process for repeat offenders, but the idea with Community Court is higher accountability, quicker adjudication, sentences than are, you know, pretty close to the offense time, so there's a relationship there to the offender that may not as much occur today, depending on their unique circumstance. So each individual is assessed as they come into the court to determine what those needs are in that process. So the evidence in other areas shows reduce crime, reduce recidivism, and a different view from those defenders about their community.
With my last seconds, I'll say that it seems to me like this is an effort to provide, and even with the court, forgive me, but to provide more services rather than sanctions in a case where someone has already proven their intent to commit harm.
So I have George Polling, I have Allen, Claire, Chris, Greg, George Brown, and Betty.
Much everybody. George Polling here.
All right, thank you. I too was of the impression that the Downtown Public Safety Zone was to be in place during a transitional period. So my question is, how long are we looking for this process to take before it's up and running, so to speak, that you're proposing? With the Community Court and the restroom facilities, et cetera?
The Community Court process is at least a 12-month, probably 12- to 18-month process. It's about three to four months to do a community needs assessment. There's a survey to the community about where they feel public safety issues are in the community, how, a variety of questions. Then there's some analysis of that, and then a period of time where we develop, we use that information to help inform a concept paper. Once that happens, we have to determine what resources are needed, how we get from our environment today to a new environment, you know, what, do we need to reallocate resources that we have? How does that work? And it's not just the court, there's a prosecutor's office and defense attorneys, you know, and police department, everybody who's involved would need to participate in that conversation. So it's a pretty significant shift from a traditional court environment that requires a lot of planning and forethought.
And when is the sunset date again on the?
November 30th.
Of this year, two months. I was wondering, is there any way possible that maybe we can, instead of letting it sunset, put a moratorium on it? Track the activity downtown in this perhaps two-year period that we're talking about? And if we see an uptick in the activity, go ahead and reinstate it, or if it continues to drop, just do away with it altogether? Is there any way that we can do that, possibly? In other words, I don't want it to go completely away just yet if, but we need something in place to kind of take its place before I want it to go away completely?
Well, if it's, since it's set to sunset, you'd have to amend it, adopt an ordinance that addresses that, and then if, once that's in place, if you want to say, but we're not going to put, then put a moratorium on acting under it, it would be two separate actions. But the first thing you'd have to do is address the fact that it's going away November 30th. So yes, it can be done. It would take a series of actions by the council.
Okay. I'll go ahead and listen to the rest of the conversation before I figure out what my next step is. But, you know, I too agree that there's been a lot of positive activity in the downtown area, but I don't think it's been enough to solve our problems. Just the other day, and I was telling the mayor about this phone call, I received a phone call from a young man that has been born and raised in this area, he's a U of O grad, he's a small businessman, and he and his wife spent a weekend in Portland, in the downtown part of Portland, and had a wonderful weekend. And then the next weekend, they came down, down to Eugene, go to a new restaurant, parked a car, and walked less than a block, and were accosted by a group of about 20 young people. Harassed, intimidated, called names, et cetera, et cetera. Broke away from that group, was accosted by another person, got flustered, made the wrong turn, so they decided to go home, and had to go through the gauntlet to get back to their car. So there's still a lot of work left to do in the downtown area. And I just, I think with the increased police presence that we've got, I think that's made some improvements with the increased population downtown, especially since the housing, what's it called?
Capstone.
Capstone's got the occupancy notice, so I think we're going to see a lot more people, you know, active in the downtown area. I just hope that helps. And then, in reference to the loos that the mayor was referring to, the last time I went online and checked, it's $90,000 per unit for purchase and installation, and that's not counting the maintenance. So that's a considerable chunk of change that we need to look at how, if we're wanting to go that direction.
Allen?
I too would like to thank the committee and the staff and all the hard work that's been going on here. Can, wasn't it in the memo, who was, who was on the Citizen Committee besides Bev Hughes? Do you have that, Pete?
Yeah, let me see. I can see it at the end of that letter, so.
Yes, no. It doesn't have all the names.
Mostly service. It's not in the materials, but we'll get it to you.
Yeah, I'd just like to publicly acknowledge all of them, and I don't exactly remember who they all were.
Oh, here you go.
Thank you. There was quite a few people. Bev Hughes, Wayne Allen, Sarah Bennett, Dan Bryant, Carl Dur, Tony Gottso, Dave Hauser, Doug Hooley, Liz Lorkey, Tamara Miller, J.D. Olson, Walter Rosenthal, and Paul Solomon. Great group. They did really good work. Thanks to them. I'm actually glad to see the exclusion zone get sunsetted. I think we do have a lot of positive activity downtown, and I think that will create a lot more eyes on the street, which is what we wanted to have happen. More people, more eyes means less problems, and therefore, less need for the exclusion zone. We also have the nine officers that we didn't have several years ago, so there's lots of positive stuff happening downtown. It's very different than it was two years ago. It's not perfect, but I'm sure it's getting better and getting better, and it will continue to get better. I think the new additional programs that are suggested here are good ones, and I can support them. Community Court's a great idea. I like, I get, but why is it that we can't do this model with the existing court?
Well, I think traditionally, courts are built around a model that was, you know, is traditional in the sense that that's just how they've done business for many, many years. Moving from that model to this model requires having certain partnerships in place to provide the services that are needed, to identify which partners we need to have in place. It requires some changes in the timing and process of how we do arraignments, who needs to be present at those arraignments that are not traditionally there at those arraignments. So it's a complete business process, reengineering of court processes. So that's multiple partners and community partners involved.
That paper you wrote, was that for school?
Yeah, it was actually based on the Salem Municipal Court and addressed access to courts for homeless individuals or quality-of-life types of crimes as well. That was, one of the recommendations was this Community Court model, too. It's really proven to help address quality-of-life types of crimes in communities. And in some communities, that's more like prostitution, you know, criminal trespass, other types. It's a different makeup of crimes, but it's evidence-based, and there's lots of data out there suggesting that it reduces crime in individual communities everywhere.
Well, it's cool to see that somebody actually read a thesis and that it actually turned into something very positive, so that, kudos to you and for people who are reading them, because most don't get read. But it's really sad to hear the statistics that achieved 26 percent fewer felony cases being prosecuted. I guess the point here, by adding the felony drug charges to the city code, is not to prosecute them all, but to add to the quiver of the prosecutor to deal with some of the folks that are, that are recidivists.
Right. The city prosecutor couldn't possibly prosecute them all, but they can identify defendants who would benefit.
Right. And I, with, still a problem about the amount of jail beds that we have, but we did pass the Public Safety Levy at the county level, and that will certainly help. That made the jail beds go from what to what?
Have to be the same.
Well, it was.
It added about 130 jail beds, I think.
Right, okay. I really like the TBL analysis of restrooms. I think that's a good idea. I hope we can add some restrooms, and I hope that works, so that we figure out how it works. There's a couple of committee recommendations that were in Bev Hughes's letter to the City Manager that don't seem to be addressed here, to in particular, expand the mental health court and expand the use of drug court.
Those weren't.
Sure, both of those are encompassed in the Community Court model, so part of the individual assessment is to determine if the individual has a substance abuse or mental health issue, and so those, those individuals would be directed to programs appropriate for whatever their individual situation.
Okay, so that gets all wrapped into the Community Court model.
Right.
Great. It even looks even better.
And then, we can't, the District Attorney can't take only Eugene drug possession cases and move them into drug court, but not do the same in Springfield and Florence and other parts of Lane County. All defendants taken through the District Attorney's Office need to be handled in the same way.
Hmm.
So that really isn't a place that we could take people. It turns out, the DA's offices received two grants that go into, that are funded beginning in September this month. One adds another DA and a staff person to drug court, so they'll be taking more of those cases. And another one adds a staff person and a prosecutor to Veterans Court that they have in the state system. So even though those weren't commissioned because of the work of this committee, it is a benefit that we're seeing at the same time.
Okay, thanks. I think this is all steps in the right direction, and I think, and I can support where we're going with this.
Claire?
Thank you. Well, thank you for this great work and for this presentation. I am very pleased with the ending of the exclusion zone. I opposed it professionally and personally before I was on council and would have voted against it if I'd been a member of this body when it was adopted. So I would oppose any efforts to extend it beyond November. But I realize it was created to address real problems downtown, and I appreciate the thinking that's gone into both committees, both what the committee did and then what Chief Kerns did to bring that, those things forward in a recommendation. And I think that these are positive recommendations. So I just have a couple of questions and some comments. So in doing a triple bottom line analysis of the restroom situation, I'm assuming that would include also looking at the current conditions of those restrooms, where they're located, how they're lit, what the real problems are with, with those designs right now. I've talked about this with the City Manager recently, that I would not be comfortable going into some of those restrooms, you know, at dusk or something. They're just set up in a way that's kind of antithetical to good urban design and safety. And we've heard talk, and maybe it was in another memo, about changes in terms of lighting downtown and looking at lighting downtown to increase safety. I don't know if that was included in this review or can be spoken to briefly?
That has been funded. I don't see anybody from Facilities here who can help with that.
Renee knows the answer.
We've, pardon me?
Renee knows something about that.
We have changed some of the fixtures, which has improved lighting, and we've added lights in certain places that were dark at night previously where a number of people gathered. But I don't think all the changes have been done yet that we'd like to make, and the funding still is available for those.
Okay, so that's in progress. Some's been accomplished and more is to be done. Great. And then I think we need to be thinking ahead and poised to address new public safety concerns that are. that are going to arise with all the new students coming downtown. That's going to create a different mix and might create some problems that we haven't had down there before, or exacerbate some, I'm thinking mostly around drinking, that we have had to deal with. And a couple of months ago, when I went to a downtown neighborhood association meeting, the police officers who came to give an update talked about that they'd been working with officers from parole and probation downtown. Is that work still continuing? Can you speak to that a little bit?
I'm sure it is. There are a number of clients who hang out downtown, and our officers encounter them. The parole and probation officers like to be familiar with where they are, so we work together to.
So that's an extra layer of supervision and having eyes on potential offenders?
It is, yeah. It's a collaborative effort that we have. We have not provided office space, though, for parole and probation here in the new downtown office, because we don't want to have visits there. We don't want to encourage all the clients to be downtown.
To come to the LCC building, yeah. Good thinking. And so, we might need to hear more. I think we will want to hear more about this community court proposal. I think it, it seems very promising, but some of my questions include, is it going to replace the mental health court, the drug court, or the teen court?
It wouldn't, it would not replace them. It may get, it may insert them sooner than they are currently. So if someone's identified with a mental health issue that needs to be connected with behavioral health services in Lane County, we'd be able to connect them to the mental health court and to those services in a much shorter timeline than we are able to do today.
So it might increase the efficiency of those courts?
Yes.
Okay. And what are some of the means that you might think the court would use to hold people accountable? Counselor Clark brought up his concern that really the only way to hold people accountable is to put them in jail, which is one of our most expensive means of sanction. So what are some other examples of ways people might be held accountable through a community court?
Sure. And there are models where people go, so if you're cited, for example, for prohibitive camping in a park, then your sanction might be that you go back to that same park and you perform community service in terms of cleanup in that park. It might be if you're, you know, if you have a substance abuse issue, that one of the requirements of your sanctions is that by tomorrow. So it would give a definite timeframe that you have to meet with, you know, this specific agency to be able to get, you know, to verify that you're going to be entered into treatment or, so it would be those times. That's why the partnerships are so important, because you need to be able to get them into that service very quickly, and be able to verify that they followed through on that sanction.
Great. And then my last question is, does the council need to take action on any of these particular items, setting aside the purchasing of new restrooms, in order for them to move forward?
Not at the moment.
Okay.
If we add crimes to.
Thank you.
Bruce?
Thank you. I'm always very influenced by and appreciate the perspective of our executive staff, professional staff. In your opinion, chief, are you comfortable with allowing the public safety zone to sunset, knowing what you want to do, what you plan to do, where things are? And you can be candid, are you comfortable with allowing it to sunset?
No, it is a sanction that is convenient to forbid certain people to be in the downtown court, to relieve the downtown of the anxiety that certain people create there by their presence and their behavior. The reality is that we're able to use it so rarely, it's as though we don't have an exclusion ordinance. So then the question is really the calculation of whether or not it's worth the public concern over the civil, the civil rights question, to have something that is so pincered over the years.
Thank you. I very much appreciate your, your opinion and your, and your candid response. I think what you just said is very similar to where I am. I think it was a useful tool to put in place temporarily, to, to deal with what was a very legitimate and very substantial issue. But I also had concerns over some of the due process questions, and so it was a, between a rock and a hard place. And my long-term goal was ultimately to get rid of it and replace it with something else. And so I think the desire to replace it with something that is also effective is, is still there. So what I would encourage, if we allow this to sunset, and I certainly would encourage allowing it to sunset, is that we don't consider that the end, but simply the beginning of continued solutions. And I appreciate the idea of environmental design. I think you can do a lot with environmental design. I also want to look at other ideas that could be done around, you know, beds through Springfield. You know, they can hold misdemeanor crimes, maybe for a cheaper rate, we might consider some. We had talked before about jail beds as an alternative, and maybe some less expensive options there. I think we're dealing with a finite group of people. We're not talking about a large number of behavioral problems downtown. I think we're dealing with a relatively small group, you know, sealed 80-20 rule, you know, 80% of the problems are caused by 20% of the people. I think being very thoughtful about some specific things we can do with that finite population around behavioral issues could net us a lot of benefit in downtown, could really get us a lot of effective outcomes. I think what the committee proposed to do is a wonderful step in the right direction, but I would encourage us to look at some even more creative ideas in terms of what we might be able to do. I think we're absolutely moving in the right direction, and I very much appreciate the work the committee did. And I guess my final response would be to say, I challenge us to continue to think of even more creative ideas for how we can make a real impact downtown on what is not an insurmountable problem. I think with some creativity, we could deal with a finite population, figure out some solutions down there.
Greg?
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to echo the sentiments around the table about the quality of the work that has been done. I really think that this is excellent work. I too have similar concerns to Counselor Poling, and I've heard from a number of business people and just plain citizens who are continuing to come downtown, afraid to come into downtown court, transact their business, and are continually harassed by individuals who subsequently go into jail, come out of jail. And the effectiveness of the downtown public safety zone, as, as the chief has pointed out, has been limited. So I think that this set or suite of strategies, hopefully over the next couple of years, can help us get to a better place downtown. One of the things I wanted to ask you specifically about is some different strategies that are being employed in other cities and municipalities, most notably Cottage Grove, and specifically around panhandling, which has been a big issue, not just in the downtown court, but throughout our community. And that is, that what Cottage Grove has done is to cite and fine people who give money to panhandlers. Those are the people who have the most capacity to, you know, pay a fine or, you know, be embarrassed by it. It's similar to the, to the strategy that was employed, I think, about 20 years ago to deal with prostitution on Sixth and Seventh, whereas, you know, you arrest, you arrest prostitutes because of the activity that they're doing. But in this case, what, what we did as a community was also publish the names of the Johns in the paper, and that had a significant effect on that activity on Sixth and Seventh. So was there any conversation or discussion about some of those other alternative models that might be able to significantly make an impact, say for instance, on panhandling?
I think we discussed panhandling, or I don't remember the committee discussing panhandling. And you see in Beverly Hughes's letter, the entire list of recommendations that they brought forward.
Yeah. Any, I was going to say, any ideas or thoughts around that? Because I think that that's one of the, the, the big issues that, you know, happen is, when I come downtown to go to work or whatever, the case may be, you know, I have to deal with a number of people who do, you know, do a lot of that panhandling, and some of that is attached to some of the other criminal behaviors, and the vagrancy and the, the things that we continue to grapple with in making this area safe for everybody to, to use.
Yeah, panhandling is a particularly difficult behavior to manage. It's a lawful thing to do in public space. Where it becomes illegal is when a person invades the space or touches the person of another while they're panhandling, or they frighten them for reasons that would constitute a crime, in ways that would constitute a crime. But apart from those rare occasions, it's a very difficult thing to manage. But there are communities that have done a number of innovative things, to what effect, I'm not exactly sure.
George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, just a brief comment. It's my understanding, the Oregon Supreme Court said panhandling is free speech, and you cannot prevent it in public space. Private property, yes, but not, but not in public space, so that's, I don't know how anyone's going to get around that without a court challenge. Secondly, I would like to thank everyone on the citizens committee for the, worked on this report, that come up with these ideas. They're really, really nice work, I think. And I'm, I'm really kind of excited about seeing how the evolution of this community court. I think that's a, a great idea, to, to expand the work of the mental health court and the drug court. It's, you know, I think that by and large, they've been proven to be cost-effective solutions to dealing with repeat people who would normally bounce in and out of jail, and you, the idea is, well, wait, steer them in a different path, and they won't be going to jail all the time. I know somebody personally that was addicted to drugs and was busted for possession. He, he never committed any crimes, but, and he went through drug court, and it really, I don't know, probably saved his life. So I really look forward to seeing how that, that all falls out. And the bathrooms, you know, we've been talking about bathrooms downtown since I got on the city council four and a half years ago. And, you know, so we, I, I don't know, I'll just throw out an idea, we don't have to discuss it now. I was thinking, you know, we have council contingency funds, and we could, we could rent two or three porta-potty single stall and put them wherever the problem areas are, and try that for a year. It'd be $3,000. My understanding, well, that's $1,000 for a dumpster and a porta-potty. So I don't know what it would be for three. It'd be less than $1,000 a year each, and maybe we could just try that until we get a more permanent thing, like the Portland loo or something like that. And last thing is, I'm not really interested in, in rehashing the sunset date of the downtown public safety zone. I mean, I guess we could do that, but I, I just think we hear a lot of the same old arguments, and probably wouldn't extend it, so I think it's, I think it's time to let it go. Thank you.
Eddie?
Thank you. I thought the exclusion zone should never have stopped, and I'm glad it's going to end. Finally, and I, part of the reason I think it's not good is that people have to be somewhere, and if they're not downtown, they're some other place. And I just got a letter that illustrates that. This is not because of the exclusion zone, I don't know how these people live there, but the South Eugene residential area, not, not dense, not a dense area at all. A person tells me that someone came to the door, and then they, because they refused to open the door for him, yelled obscenities, then the window was broken, that same house, and then they found someone creeping up to their front door to use their water faucet to fill, and they thought that the fact that we're, this person thought, the fact that we are encouraging homeless camping was causing that, even though there's not camping in that area. But it just illustrates that people, the people who cause trouble are going to be somewhere, and I don't think we can, of course, I've gotten mail saying we should send them away with one-way bus ticket, but I guess they could get another one-way bus ticket to come back if we did. And I, I'm confused, oh, I have suggested before having people clean up as a penalty, and the answer I've gotten every time was, who would supervise them? That it would cost money to supervise them. Is there, is there a solution for that? Are you, are you considering how, how you would?
Sure. That would, that would have to be addressed in the partnerships and solutions that we come up with. We currently do have a community service sanctioned. We have downtown cleanup, we have community service that's managed by the Lane County Board, and we have road crew that we use all for sanctions as well. But this would try to relate where the crime occurred to where the person performs that service back to their community. A restorative type of approach.
Good idea, but people have always said, who would, how do you pay for the supervision?
That's part of the planning process and concept, and finding those partners to help make that happen.
Well, I have thought, instead of closing this space outside this building on Saturdays, it would be better for someone to help people clean up. They say they're closing it because people leave a mess. And I think maybe we could, would something like that be addressed by community court? You know, the big fence goes up on Saturday.
So community court would only address offenders that were cited into our court, at municipal court? It's not necessarily a program where we would organize a downtown cleanup, or for people who are not offenders that have been cited into our court. So it's initiated by some sort of filing, either a violation or misdemeanor filing in our court, and then an assessment of that individual.
But I assume it is a misdemeanor to defile the public spaces?
It can be.
Oh, okay. I just, and I think definitely we need restrooms downtown, and I don't think porta-potties, they'd be okay temporarily, but they're not that attractive. I was married to a man who was a veteran and had spent, met over five years in Europe, where he said there were restrooms everywhere. And he would, he would get angry every time we'd be someplace, and he'd say, there are no restrooms in this city. And I think, I do think it's, unfortunately, human beings are built so that they need them. Thanks.
Pick that up with the designer.
Oh, I wanted to say one more thing. You're laughing. I thought, I thought Greg's example of, of finding the person, comparing the person who gives to panhandlers to the Johns who patronize prostitutes was rather interesting. I don't think we can do that.
So we are about three minutes past the time we need to transition. We have the other issue that's on the calendar that George has brought to us, and we have two more things that we're going to try to, the other George has another motion to make, and we have an emergency clause discussion for the.
Camping ordinance.
Camping ordinance, right. So we have to try to get through all of those, all of those things. So I have Mike and Alan in a queue, but I'm going to ask you to be really quick, because we need to move.
Two quick questions. One, when first we sunsetted this, Judge Allen was very clear that he was not in favor of sunsetting this. Has he since changed his mind, or are either of you aware?
I don't have any comment from Judge Allen pertaining to that.
Another one, I don't want people to have the wrong impression. When we started this in the beginning of 2008, it was to address the issue that we didn't have enough jail beds and violent folks. It wasn't for nuisance issues. It was because violent folks were out at the door within an hour and back in somebody's face and following them to their car after work. And I don't know how the court process, although it sounds like it will be a good one, community court addresses that kind of violent potential confrontation. That's what this was designed to address. And so, for clarity, chief, how many jail beds were there when we first passed this to address that problem in early 2008, roughly?
The city had 15.
The county.
On the county.
Available. Wasn't it just over 400 at the time?
The, the reason that I'm hesitating is that the county has calculated how many beds they have, and it's only in the last couple of years that they've identified a number that serves only local offenders. So I don't recall in 2008 what that number might have been. It might have been around 200 jail beds for local offenders.
Is it fair to say that there are less beds available today than there were in 2008? Is it fair to say that there are less beds available today than there were in 2008? Significantly less?
I don't know the number.
Okay, that was my point. Thank you.
Alan?
I just wanted to be clear that the harassment and panhandling issues that referred to, which I think is a problem downtown, happened while the exclusion zone is in place and won't change if the exclusion zone sunsets. But it will be impacted by, I think, these new things that we're talking about, these additional programs and actions that we're doing. And if we follow Chris's advice and look for new creative ways, I think that will help. I guess, Chief, maybe you can be more direct in answer. What are we doing about the panhandling and the harassment that occurs in the downtown that seems to get on a lot of people's nerves? We get emails about that and phone calls quite a bit.
Well, right now, we're really only able to deal with it through police presence and by addressing the other behaviors that some people who panhandle engage in that are criminal. We'll put together, well, I've asked our downtown team to think about what innovative solutions should be implemented to the problem of aggressive panhandling. I walked through last week sometime, and a woman who suffers from severe mental health conditions was near one of the restaurants where there are tables on the sidewalk, and she was asking people at the table for food or money, and people were giving it to her. All of that behavior is lawful. It's not illegal. I know that it sometimes makes people uncomfortable, but it is, so to manage that is pretty tricky. So, our downtown team is thinking about how we might go about addressing it. I'm sure they'll work with the PDD staff who...
Could you follow up back with us about what happens with that? Thanks.
So, we're going to wrap this one up. I would just say that the way that I look at that is, we have, and she's not the only one, we have some people with very severe mental health issues that have no recourse and nothing there for them. And that is, that is an issue. And there is no place for them to go and no way to make them go there. So, those are, those are issues that are very, very tough, in large part because of some of the situation we find ourselves in in terms of mental health resources right now. All right, we're going to move on to the next issue. Thank you very, very much. This is very interesting. We're going to go and do the George Pollings issue, and then we'll come back to try to finish up the last two. So, let's do this one as quickly as we can and efficiently as we can. Right ahead.
I will keep this very brief. What the situation at Stryker Field boils down to is we've had a park for quite a long time that has always been intended for being part of a larger sports complex. And the council, through the adoption of the project list that was associated with the PROS plan, has put that into policy. So, we have a policy that says, put sports fields in a sports complex model with lights. The neighborhood association would like to see that be something different. There's interest in not having lights, not having sports fields, having something more akin to a neighborhood park with passive uses. So, the question is, you know, does the council want to move forward towards redesigning this park, and if so, when? And our recommendation is, we think it should be looked at. It's a very legitimate question to look at, but it's tied into things that are citywide, including the provision of sports fields and sports complexes across the city, and we'd prefer not to look at it in isolation. And therefore, our recommendation is to defer this to when we begin the update of the PROS plan, which we are now in the early stages of talking about and figuring out when that will be and what that will look like.
Okay, Councilor Polling.
Thank you. Now, this was brought to my attention by the Northeast Neighborhood Association, and they have been working diligently with city staff and as well as the Neighborhood Association members and local businesses and volunteers and stuff. And they've been using the area as a more passive neighborhood-type park. There's been some concerns raised about the lighting situation, being close to one of the streets actually where houses are going to be. The folks in that neighborhood have worked to kind of make it a little park already, and they've lined up some volunteers to do some more work, as well as donations for equipment and supplies. And with the increase of housing that's currently going on right now, that has occurred and that is scheduled to occur, the fear is that this area will soon be lost for the availability for a neighborhood park. The school district has made no indication as to if and when they will develop the adjacent 4J property into a school, and they claim that by having the area of Stryker Field, it makes it easier for them to design their schools. Well, if they haven't even started looking at when they're going to do it, their design process is kind of far out in the future. So, my ultimate goal would be to go ahead and initiate the redesignation of Stryker Field and get that done as soon as possible and have it redesignated into a neighborhood park. The Invision Eugene process, we don't know how long that's going to take. I mean, look how long we've been working on it. And once that's done, then the PROS comprehensive plan has to be reworked. What are we looking at? Maybe three, four years down the road? And I don't think that that piece of property can sit out there that long without us taking some action to make it a neighborhood park.
Do you have any comment to that?
Three to four years is probably a reasonable timeframe to address it. There are other factors, such as what is already on our work program, that are going to influence how soon we could even start if the council directed us. And I can't answer that right now, but we can certainly figure that out. We have a little skate park project that we're working on, a few other things that are keeping us very busy.
Got it, Claire, and then I've got Greg.
Thank you. So, you know, I'd be willing to consider this redesignation. I'd want to see, you know, comparisons to why we banked this, what other assets are in that part of town that might replace a community park kind of designation if we were to change this to a neighborhood park. I was wondering how the acreage of Stryker Field currently compares to other designated neighborhood parks.
Well, we have a wide range of sizes. The rule of thumb is that the ideal neighborhood park is about four acres. We have some that are small as one acre. We have some that are 12 acres. This size is 8.6, so it'd be quite large, larger than is needed.
But it wouldn't be the largest.
No.
So, you might have answered this already, but what does completion of Invision Eugene implementation measures mean exactly?
Well, the idea was that since we know that, or we expect that some residential areas will be added to the urban growth boundary, we would want to do park planning for those areas and include that in an update to the PROS plan. If we did that together with the other updates that are needed, that's much more efficient use of staff resources and funding, as opposed to having several iterations of, you know, the meetings and the council being involved and so forth. So, it's an efficiency driver here, really, that we would say, let's bring all these issues together and address them. But really, it's tied to where in the Invision Eugene process would we know what the new residential areas are going to look like so we can do planning around park services.
Okay. And then the mention in here of the city council's adopted PROS plan being remanded to the Luba Board of Appeals piqued my curiosity, and I would love to maybe get a memo about what that was and why that happened and what that means.
Answer, yes. Greg?
What is the current balance between community parks and the inventory of other spaces that have been designated for development in terms of that kind of sports field infrastructure in the community?
You asking, like acreages of community parks versus acreages of sports parks?
Yeah, to a certain degree.
Oh, I don't have those numbers in my head. We can certainly come back to you with that.
But in a ballpark sense, I mean, are we...
Pun intended.
Yeah, no pun intended, but, you know, would we be, you know, messing with the balance there in terms of, I know that there is a deep need for, you know, the development of sports fields and further infrastructure throughout the community. But I understand the same concerns on the other side, which is that, you know, there is also a need for people to feel, you know, have that neighborhood park and have that feeling. And I think that Councilor Polling has accurately articulated a lot of the concerns that I've heard from a lot of people, not only at his community around Stryker Park, but also in my community around Golden Gardens.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, our conversations with Recreation Division and Athletics Program indicate we are, always have a shortage of sports fields and sports complexes. The complexes have a number of fields in them that allow different kinds of activities than you have on sites that only have one or two fields. So, we do need more, and that's what, in our mind, complicates this discussion, is what you do at Stryker Field impacts the citywide provision of sports fields and sports parks in the future, which we also have to figure out.
Yeah, this is a thorny situation. From my distant past, I recollect having many of these similar kinds of conversations. What neighborhood parks are in the immediate vicinity around Stryker Field already? Are there neighborhood parks in that area?
Crescent Park is about a quarter of a mile away. It's one of our smaller neighborhood parks.
Very small, like an acre or...
Little under an acre.
Okay, so for a neighborhood park, that's pretty darn small.
It's small.
It's pretty small. I think the standard we used to work with was four or five, so I think that's a good size. At 8.6, it's a little small for community or, you could, sports park use probably would work okay there. So, the other question is, what other sports parks are in that area?
Oh, man, you're really going to test my recall here. On the north side of town, I'm blanking out on this.
Mike shaking his head like, he's probably intimate with the area and is saying...
Sheldon has, yeah, sorry. Yeah, there's Sheldon and there's Ascot, which has sports fields, and I think there's one other one.
Yeah, no, there's, but there's not a lot. In terms of community parks, I also know that's been a real shortage up in that area, and there's been a real struggle to identify property for community park. I think this is maybe a little small for even that purpose. So, the question then is, do we need it for a sports park or do we need it for a neighborhood park? I think community park, it's probably too small, would just complicate the conversation. So, if we were to designate it as a neighborhood park, it'd be a big one, I agree, but it could service a large area. The question then remains, are we really selling ourselves short on sports parks? Are we really cutting ourselves off and losing something that could be very important? Property is disappearing up there, and thinking we could acquire some other acreage for a sports park. So, the question then really becomes, if the neighbors want it to be a neighborhood park, that sounds great, but is there an opportunity and is there a need for a sports park up there? If, when the school develops on 31 acres, maybe they'll put in some sort of a field, and the public doesn't really differentiate between a field built by a school and a field built by the city. They just want to play on the field. So, there may be an opportunity within that 31 acres for them to put in a sports field. I know they do it in a lot of other schools, and that's a pretty large size for, I'm not thinking it's a high school. It's a middle or an elementary school. I'm assuming. I don't think they're going to build another high school. But I'm guessing it's either middle or elementary school size, which means 31 acres is a pretty good-sized piece of property. You could definitely fit a sports field in there. So, I'm not feeling as much pressure to keep this. I'm second-guessing myself. You can tell I'm thinking as I'm speaking. What I'm trying to get to is, if the neighbors really want a neighborhood park, I don't want to stand in their way. But I don't want to cripple us if we're going to be losing all of our hope for having a sports park up there. I think there's still an opportunity with the school district, that even if it's a neighborhood park, there may be some synergy that we could have there. So, I really appreciate what you're saying, because you're trying to create a balance that's very hard to do, and you're dead on. But in this case, I think if the neighbors really want that to be a neighborhood park and the next closest one is only an acre, that doesn't do the trick. So, I'd be okay with it, but I figure we'd have to work with the school district to try to get that sports field in when they develop that piece of property. Or maybe do some sort of a combined, you know, school parks are done also frequently, and there's another option there.
Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. Along the lines of what Greg and Chris were saying, my question is, when we go to try to have PROS approval, what will be our obligation in terms of acreage in that area for sports parks? So, in other words, if we do this, are we going to be obligated to find other land within the close by vicinity that we will have to designate in order to have proper approval for our plan?
No. It'll be based on an evaluation of the need, both in the north region of town for sports parks and over the city as a whole. What is our overall need, and to what extent do we need a larger complex to serve the community as a whole?
I'm going to bring up something that doesn't always make some people happy. I apologize, but it does, it is a significant issue for my constituents. Please tell me if my numbers are right. In city councils' wards four, five, six, and seven, there are approximately 1,400 acres of parks. And in city councils' wards one, two, three, and eight, there are approximately 2,900 acres of parks. About right?
Yeah, the 2,900 acres includes some ridge line that is contiguous with the UGV, but right outside of those wards, but serves, you know...
That's, I bring that up again only for the sake that my colleagues understand it's a significant issue with a number of my constituents. So, I'm willing to do this change for the sake of what the neighbors would like, but I certainly would want to see it replaced with like acres within the north region with sports facilities.
Alan?
My question's about the PROS plan remand. Do we have a specific work plan and schedule to address that issue and get us to having a policy and an acknowledged plan?
No, we're not that far along.
Is that in, on the horizon, to do that?
It's in discussion stages. We've started to program it, you know, we program out our work over, in like a three-year period, and we've programmed it potentially starting two to three years out, maybe before that, because we have, we'll have so much community engagement to do to update the PROS plan.
And so, is that, so we won't have that for three, four years, at least? So, how does that, what does that mean in terms of parks and our development and planning of parks, having the PROS?
And we do have in place, the PROS plan was kind of a comprehensive policy, look at all our parks. We separately adopted by resolution the project and priorities plan that includes all of our intended projects. It was adopted as our SDC 309 plan. So, we do have a plan in place that was challenged and affirmed at Luba. So, we have a plan in place that includes Stryker Field as the sports facility. So, there is an adopted plan in place. The comprehensive plan Neil's talking about is the general big-look policy, comprehensive planning, if that makes any difference.
So, I mean, we haven't really talked about this in detail, but I think our assumption is the council could amend the policy reflected in the project and priority plan regarding Stryker Field without delving into the PROS plan as a whole.
It absolutely legally can.
So, as I understand that, that would mean that instead of waiting till we get to the PROS plan, that we would deal with the plan as it currently exists and see if, given what we know presently and what we think is coming, take a look at the pros and cons of the usage of this field. And if we, my only concern is making a decision about that before we really have that kind of conversation. And, George, you're next.
Thank you. You know, like I said, my biggest concern is the land out there is rapidly being developed, and most of it, most of the recent development is multifamily housing. In fact, there's, I think it's 112-unit retirement buildings going in that's, you know, within rock-throwing distance to where the Stryker Field property is. So, my interest is, I'm going to be putting out the motion to go ahead and initiate... is, I'm going to be putting out the motion to go ahead and initiate this redesignation. My question is to the city manager and whoever else can jump in on it, is what kind of timeline are we looking at as far as bringing back to the council the plan for the redesignation? I mean, to give us an idea how long to get started on it, to get it moving forward.
I just want to make sure I understand the question. So, if we move forward on the redesignation now, not as a part of the Pro's update, that's what you're asking?
Right.
Okay.
I anticipated this question, but I don't have a great answer for it. I mean, it may be as much as a year out, given everything that's already on our plate and is already underway. It makes a difference if we address the redesignation of the park alone and we leave the other questions about sports park services in the city and sports park services in the north region as a separate item, because that's much more complex and involves engaging the community at large as opposed to looking at one neighborhood's needs. So, depending on the comfort level of council on separating those two questions, the redesignation of the park could happen sooner, of course, the development of that as a neighborhood park and the maintenance of that as a neighborhood park are other questions we still need to address. The designation just being the first step.
And that's what, the motion I'm going to be putting out is just the redesignation of that, the Stryker Field parcel into a neighborhood park. I think the neighborhood, the neighborhood association and the people living in the neighborhood are already willing to step up and help the city with some of that development and maintenance. That could be worked out at a later time. So, I'm going to go ahead and put the motion, and I direct staff to bring back to council a plan for initiating redesignation of Stryker Field as a neighborhood park.
Second.
Moved in seconded. I've got two people in the queue. That's Claire and Alan. Claire?
So, if we were to adopt this motion, what would be the process? Is there a public hearing? Is there an opportunity? My concern is that there may be folks in that part of town who would like to see it stay as a designated sports complex, and I'd like to give those folks an opportunity to speak up if that's the case. So, is there a public hearing associated with this kind of change?
It was adopted by resolution, and so you would, the project and priorities plan was adopted by resolution. So, what, it's actually governed by the SDC plan statutes, which provide that it can be amended, that plan can be amended, and there's a public hearing if it's requested. That's just the way the statute happens to be written. So, it's not, you can always hold a public hearing if you want, but the way that statute is, is if somebody requests one, then you would hold a public hearing.
And someone could be anyone, a member of the public, or a member of the council, or?
They, the way the statute's written is that they would need to be on an interest, basically an interested parties list, for lack of a better term, but they can, but we can reach out.
So, I'd be inclined to support the motion, but I would request that we have a public hearing on the issue.
As a friendly amendment?
I don't feel I need to have it included in the motion.
So, I'm going to say that we have two more items. It's going to be quarter after. Let's see if we can wrap this up very quickly. I've got Alan and George and Mike, but I'm telling you...
I'll go fast.
Okay. Alan?
I have the same concern as Claire about that, because we've only heard from part of the public. But, to me, the issue of the redesignation and the issue of sports field are intertwined. I don't see how we could untwine, intertwine them. They need to be, we need to think about that in a more comprehensive way. So, I don't want to see us do what you suggested, Neil, which is break those up into two completely distinct issues, because I don't think that works. But, I'm willing to support the motion to have that conversation and have more input from the public.
George Brown?
Well, I don't think I'll support this motion. I would support option number two, direct staff to address the redesignation in order to do all that other, you know, all the other work and comparisons and have a conversation with 4J and with all of the neighbors. And so, that would be my, I would support option number two for sure, but I think, I just think we don't know enough, don't know enough about it to just say, well, let's just go ahead and redesign it. So, that's all.
Friendly added that the manager's plan that he's bringing back to us include a public hearing.
Accepted.
So do I. That's the second.
Yeah, ma'am, I just want to try to get a little clarification. I'm not clear yet on sort of the extent of the work that's going to go on. There's, part of it is, is if we do a bare minimum, one public hearing, we don't try to make all the connections, that's not as much staff work as community outreach and then trying to see the impact on the sports field conversation. And in the motion, I'm not sure which one you're intending, and I'm hearing different opinions. So, I'm just trying to get a sense of how much work, and that impacts the timing of when we're going to get back to it.
Well, I really don't, and I kind of agree with Alan. You can't have the conversation about the redesignation of the Stryker Field to a park without talking about the sports park, but I don't want to see it be drug out for a year. If you can do the part of the discussion in a quicker time just about the park itself, I don't understand how it can be drug out a year to include the conversation of the sports park. So, if I can get some kind of guarantee that we'll kind of truncate that timeline, I'm happy to have that conversation. But, it worries me, like I said, the extended timeline, and I'm watching that land out there being developed on a regular basis, and it's going to go away, and it might be too late.
What I would suggest is, if you pass the motion, we'll come back with some of that timeline, because Neil says there are several other things that are already in the queue and in the work, and so, part of it is, is the same people do the same work. And so, if, we'll come back with that, and if it's, if you want us to sort of switch out some of those priorities, we can. I just don't want to set an expectation that we're not able to meet based on the conversation, but we'll, if you pass the motion, we'll come back with what we think is a timeline and then go from there.
I just need a clarification. In the current, who owns Stryker Field right now?
We do.
So, it's not going anywhere. It cannot be, it cannot be developed, unless we okay that being developed. It would just be held. So, it's not going anywhere, unless you say you want it to go somewhere.
Surrounding properties that are being developed.
I know, but I thought the conversation, that the implication was, if we didn't do something right now, it would be eaten up and go away, and that is simply not the case. So, I just want to make sure that that's clear.
So, we can come back with a...
Make it a sports field.
No.
Well, we can come back with a timeline. I just don't want to have people leave with certain expectations that we haven't known that we can meet yet. So, we'll come back with that.
Vote on this. All those in favor of Council Polling's motion, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six. In opposition, two. It passes. Okay. Thank you all. Glenn?
Monday night, the council passed the camping ordinance on a six to two vote. The ordinance did not include an emergency clause. If there are six of you today, and would have to be today, that would be willing to vote for the emergency clause, the practical effect means that if the manager has a site in the next 30 days to propose to you, you could approve it. If you don't have the emergency clause, you don't have the authority for 30 days to approve that site. So, if six of you are interested in adding the emergency clause, I can walk you through the steps of doing that.
Can I have an indication of how many would be interested in emergency clause? One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, we got it.
Okay, so, the first motion that somebody needs to make, and you can just say so moved after I read it, is I move that the council reconsider its approval Monday night of the ordinance concerning overnight camping. So moved. Second?
Seconded.
You could have debate on that, or you can just vote. It would take a majority vote to reconsider, which means that the main motion is back on the table, and then I'd give you the amendment.
Just we have to have a conversation.
It's a vote on reconsidering, yeah.
Just to reconsider means start the conversation.
Okay, all those in favor of reconsideration, please indicate. Six in favor and opposition, two. Okay, next up.
Okay, so, the next motion would be, I move to amend the ordinance to add a new section five that reads as follows. Due to the inclement weather and the need to provide assistance to homeless persons as soon as possible pursuant to the provisions of section 32 sub-two of the Eugene Charter, with the affirmative vote of two-thirds of the members of the city council, upon adoption by the council and approval by the mayor or passage over the mayor's veto, this ordinance shall become effective immediately.
So moved.
Second?
Moved in seconded. Discussion? Council Polling?
Despite what was in the editorial page this morning about me being in favor of the rest stop ordinance, which was completely false, I will support this motion, because the council majority at our meeting Monday night voted to move forward with it. So, rather than getting in the way of something that the council's already voted on, and I've done this before, to allow the city manager the flexibility to act on this as the majority of the council agrees, I will vote in favor of the motion about the emergency clause and only about the emergency clause.
We understand. You do not support the rest stop concept. Yes?
I, for the reason that it was a bad idea then, and I still think it's a bad idea, and for me, it's a sense of continuity. I'll vote against it, because I think it was a bad idea then, and I think it's a bad idea now.
Okay, I think we've all had our piece. Let's vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Seven in favor and one in opposition. It passes.
Okay, so, that means the main motion has now been amended to add the emergency clause. Now, you need to vote again on the ordinance, and this requires six votes in favor.
All right.
So, do just...
You don't need to so move.
Okay, all those in favor, please indicate. Six in favor and in opposition, two. Okay, it passes.
Thank you. That one's done.
All right. You're up, George Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to read my motion, and then, if I get a second, I will just speak very, very, very briefly to it. I move to direct the city manager to prepare for council's consideration a plan for the city of Eugene to acquire the Civic Stadium property from 4J School District via land swap, purchase, lease-to-buy, a combination of these, or any other means the city manager deems feasible. If council approves such a plan, the proposal should be submitted to 4J and the school district's RFP process, in which proposals are currently due by December 3, 2013.
Second.
Moved in seconded.
Okay, I, you know, evidently there was some ambiguity in the minds of several people, including 4J, School Board and Superintendent, not just at the city, to, you know, the intent of the motion that Counselor Evans and I passed last Monday night. So, this is merely a way to remove all the ambiguity and make it very clear what was intended, and hopefully it will provide clarity to the 4J School Board and Superintendent also.
So, I have Mike, George Polling, Claire, and Chris in the queue, but before I do that, I want to ask Glenn, does this language achieve the goal that Council Brown has?
This language, I believe, achieves that goal, as long as the goal is that staff prepare options and bring them back to council for consideration and approval. This is not direction to the city manager, and I don't think that's the intent, direction to the city manager to go sign a deal with 4J. The, as long as I have the floor, what this doesn't clarify is, how does this impact the motion that you approved the other night, and in particular, do we still need to do all of the work that was called for by that motion in this same timeframe, or does the rest of the stuff, for example, the requirement to look at a sports authority, which is really a special district, do we need to be doing that at the same time we're trying to do this?
I think I can clarify that. I think that Counselor Evans and I are interested in that concept, but that is more of a long-term thing and certainly cannot possibly be accomplished by December 3. And I believe, I don't want to put words in Greg's mouth, but I believe we're willing to put that way on the back burner. Some of the other things, working with the soccer teams and all those folks, that doesn't have to go front and center. My, the way I think this can work, well, I really think the only way it's going to work is first you have to secure site control.
Yeah, I think that this motion is a distillation of, you know, the intent that we had Monday night.
So, I, what I want to be sure we do here is that motion that passed on Monday night is still there, and this would be in addition to that as we're currently doing it, right, Glenn? Unless, unless, so what do we need to do to make sure there's no misinterpretation?
So, what I would ask, in a sense, is if you would accept the clarification that this motion is the first priority, and the motion from the other night is work that the council still wants done, but that motion can wait until after December 3. That work can begin after December 3.
I accept that, yes.
Well, I accept that with one small caveat. I think, you know, creating and investigating a sports authority for maintenance and all that stuff, that will take a long time. I think some of the other things, phase two, phase three, like, you know, maintenance and management and rehabbing, I think some of that work could initiate, but the main thing is, is to have a proposal that council will either approve or reject and have it ready in time for 4J's deadline of December 3. Now, I have a copy of their RFP, and right on the first page, it says, the director, they reserve the right to cancel the solicitation or reject all of the proposals. Number two, postpone the selection of the apparent successful proposer for a period not to exceed 90 days, or reject all proposals. So, I don't know if it's kosher to have informal discussions with 4J. I'm hoping that now they see that we're going to move this forward. That will give them clarity, too, and...
But, what we're trying to do today, though...
But, all we're trying to do today is, yes, just, we can do that later.
So, we have like three minutes here to try to get this done, and I just want to be sure that we're going to get the answer that you want for the motion that's on the table, but I also want to be sure we don't have a bunch of stuff hanging out there that's going to be a problem. So, I'm going to ask Glenn for his guidance, and I'm going to ask you to try to get...
Sure.
What? So, I don't have the clarity, because I heard George say, some of the motion from the other night needs to be done before December 3. I heard Greg say, it can wait. If the only thing that needs to be done before December 3 is this, and if it's not on this piece of paper, then staff can wait to start that work until after December 3. So, you're not in, okay, so, yes, now I have the clarification. If this motion passes, we will do this, and if it's not on here, we won't start that work until after December 3.
Okay. All right, so, now I have five people in the queue and two minutes for us to try to get to conclusion here, or we'll extend the time.
Move to extend. Minutes.
Second?
All right, all those in favor extending for 10 minutes? Everybody, okay, we're okay. So, 12 more minutes. Okay, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. My understanding from what Glenn said the other night was that even if we use park bond money to purchase this, the manager's going to have to recommend that we run it as a park, and the only way we can have it maintained as a sports facility, as I understand it, is if we run it, which means we have to pay for rehab and we have to pay for maintenance. We can't lease that out to somebody else, and these are potential alternatives. We don't compete with what the, what 4J will have as likely alternatives. I'm going to vote against this, because I don't, again, I don't think the staff should be wasting time doing this. As much as I love Civic Stadium, as much as I'd like that piece of our history to stay exactly as it is, the reality is, in less than six months' time, we're going to have a discussion about whether or not we cut fire stations. In six months' time, we're going to have another discussion about whether or not we close pools. And right now, we're telling the community, we may have the money to buy Civic Stadium, but we don't have the money for core services, and it's a horrible message to send the community. I think this is a very bad idea.
George Polling?
I agree with what Mike just said, plus, you know, to me, what we're doing is saying, well, let's buy this and then figure out what we're going to do with it later. This property's been for sale for a number of years. If it was so important of an issue, it could have been brought up at a meeting, at a motion at any, any time at any meeting. It didn't need to go on to a work session. I hope that 4J just decides to sell it for as much money as they can. It's their property. I think they should do with what they want. I think they should do with what they want. I think, like Mike said, we're going to be sending an awful message to our voters to, if we spend the money from the park bond fund, which we can't, to purchase this and then try to figure out what we're going to do and we're not going to be able, we don't even have enough money to maintain the parks we have now. It just, it does not make any sense whatsoever to get involved in this. I think there's not only some political backlash that we're going to be looking at, but it's just physically irresponsible of us to do this.
Claire?
Thank you. So the city attorney dealt with my one issue was how would this relate to the motion we passed earlier? And then, you know, we'll talk about this more fully if this motion passes when the city manager brings back his proposals. But we have an example right now of a skate park being built currently with a public-private partnership that went into that. So it's not necessarily true that we can't draw on private contributions to create a publicly owned asset that then can be of value to the rest of the community.
And Chris?
For me, I think the conversation about a sports authority, which is the part that we're delaying, is the more interesting conversation for me and the one I would like to have. I think the conversation about buying Civic Stadium, for all the reasons that have been said, is sending a bad message. Because Civic Stadium is a lightning rod. It's not like a small park or skate park or something else. Civic Stadium is a lightning rod in the community, pro or con, it is a lightning rod. And for us to become entangled in that, I think, is going to be an issue for us later on. I think, you know, people don't distinguish one kind of money from another. They say, you've got the money to buy this, then they don't, they don't know about different kinds of money. I think also the perspective that we will be having a conversation about having to make budget cuts and looking at revenue is going to be very complicating. I know Civic Stadium. It is an enormous hole into which we will pour money. And if we buy it, we will be responsible for that. Now, we can turn around and sell it, but then what have we accomplished? We buy it simply so we can turn around and sell it again? That's, that's not good fiscal policy. I don't think we should get embroiled in Civic Stadium. I think the school district is doing a perfectly fine job disposing of Civic Stadium. I think they will take care of that and they will do it themselves. And really, the city of Eugene doesn't need to get caught up in that whole discussion, particularly when any money we had available to do it would be extremely limited in terms of what we could do with the park once we acquired it. So I'm going to vote against it. I think it's a dangerous thing for us to do and I can't support it.
Alan?
So just to clarify, George, that the, there's kind of two steps to this. Acquisition, site control, and then figure out what to do with it and how to rehab it. And so we can do that by buying it with the parks bond money and then doing a process and figuring out if we and how we would rehab it if we can and what it would cost. And so, and that's not a bad plan. That's a good plan because if we don't act, it probably goes away forever. So, and it's not at all the same as the budget issues we are seeing in front of us. This would be park bonds money that can only be used for the acquisition of land, can't be used for anything else. Whether or not we made this motion, did anything with Civic Stadium will have not one bit of impact on our coming general fund budget conversation. It will have a long-term impact on that. So it won't make that go away, it won't change it at all. I don't think it's irresponsible. I think it's actually a responsible thing to do to try to save some of the history that is, that we've seen. And, and the risk is exactly what you said, Chris, which is if we buy it and we can't figure it out and we sell it, well, at least we tried to do that and gave that a good, good shot. We do a terrible job of saving our history here. And to me, this is worth doing. The risk here is, would we sell it for as much as we bought it for? Probably. I don't think that that's a big risk.
Eddie?
I agree with what Alan said. I, and this is money that can only be used for park, land acquisition. That's the way the parks bond was created, was formed. And we still have almost $2 million for natural areas and about $9 million for other parks money. Is that correct?
It's probably relative scale. I don't know exactly.
Well, approximately, I think that's correct. And, yeah, I guess the authority over there says yes. And that, I think, protecting a part of our history is really important and it's an opportunity we shouldn't miss. It's something that, unlike some things we do, some things we could do later, but this, we couldn't do this in 10 years.
Got you.
Thing would have fallen down. And I think it's just really an important thing. And what people do associate with the budget is the fact that we have given tax breaks to apartment complexes and they are right to associate that. This is not associated with our general fund budget.
So I've got George Brown and Greg in this round and we will be at the time where you will either have to extend or you will vote. George Brown?
Well, I'll be very brief, Mayor. I mean, I think this sends the best possible message to the citizens of Eugene. I think it sends the best message to 4J. You know, and it'll preserve the intent of the original bestowal of the property to 4J, which was to be perpetually used for recreation. It'll benefit, you know, the children of Eugene. It will be a venue for soccer. The growth of soccer is phenomenal. It's not going away. It gets stronger every year. We now have Eugene Metro that's associated with the Portland Timbers. That's for real. That's a really big deal. And we have the creation of a professional development league team, Lane United Reds. That's huge. That really, for me, that really kept the balance in favor of doing this. Plus, all of the local teams will play there too. And by the way, they pay, they pay to use the fields. They don't just have a soccer game on a field. They pay the school or somebody to use that field. So it's not a, it's not going to be an albatross. And really, you know, so we're providing a great recreation area. We are providing, people will be coming from out of town in large numbers to watch these professional, semi-professional games. And I think just as important, we're preserving a very important piece of our architectural heritage. And we've pretty much let 90% of our cool buildings downtown go, you know, the last 50 years. So it's very, it's enormously important that we give it our best to save this. It's imminently rehabitable. I've been there many, many times on work sessions. I've read all the reports from the engineers, structural engineers, and it's, it's imminently doable. Thank you.
Greg?
You know, I've, thank you, Mayor. I've had considerable correspondence with neighborhood groups that surround Civic Stadium, various parties throughout the city and the community who have said to me, and as well as I know that some of the rest of you too, that there is a strong interest in retaining that site for either historic purposes and/or recreational purposes for this community. I remind us that we had a conversation a couple of days ago at the Budget Committee about values and vision. And one of the things that I think is important for this community is to retain the vision that we have for this community and subsequently the values that are, that correspond with that vision. And so I think that if we don't make this effort, and there is no guarantee that our RFP is going to be the one that is accepted, there are other suitors in the game, that, you know, we would not be doing the due diligence in terms of respecting the vision that this council and this community have articulated as the values that they hold to be most dear to them.
So we are right up against the time you voted for. I've got George Pauling and Mike in the queue. If you want to extend it five more minutes for them to speak, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six. Wait a minute. One, two, three, four, five, six, and opposition, two, it passes. So we get five more minutes. George Pauling?
Real quick question. What does 4J currently pay out either a month or a year for mothballeding Civic Stadium? Do we know?
We don't know that information.
There are some costs involved in that, is that correct?
Correct.
And where would that money come from out of our budget until such time we come up with maybe like Claire said, a public-private partnership like on the skate park, which was a three-year process? Where do we come up with that money?
Not knowing for sure. We would generally look to the parks maintenance for that kind of dollars or facilities, either one of which I don't know for sure at the moment.
Just one more reason why I'm going to vote no.
All righty then, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. And before I said, I, on my Facebook page, I have friends of all political stripes, not just one or the other. And I posted this question on there and got almost 60-some responses and each and every single one of them said, are you out of your mind? Don't do this. Some of whom have a loose association or former association with the University of Oregon. I would remind my colleagues, there's a reason that the U of O Ducks and the M's don't play at Civic Stadium anymore. And it's because the university did a fairly thorough study of this and how much it would cost to rehab it and how much it would cost in order to make it usable. And that's available for us and I'd really like to have that information if the U of O will make that available to us as a part of this conversation. This will be a financial albatross around our neck that we will regret for a very long time.
Okay, then, ready to vote. All of those in favor of George's motion? One, two, three, four, five, and opposition, one, two, three, it passes. Thank you.